Let everyone and so I believe you have everything ready to go.
All right. All right. Well, good evening, everyone.
Reporting in progress.
To go.
Sorry.
No problem. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April eleventh, twelfth, and city council work session. We have two items, actually three items on the agenda tonight. First being the M step, twelfth and project candidate selection candidates, which will be presented by Mike McCarthy.
Hello, and good evening.
Mike.
And so we're talking about the county's major streets transportation improvement program. Alternatively goes by either M step or zip depending on which one you like and how what you might think sounds better. And I will be pulling up a PowerPoint share screen here. Along with this also is Cody Field who did a lot of work on the PowerPoint and a lot of this together. And so it should be in slideshow. Are you all seeing slide that says a MSTIP over?
Yes.
All right. So it's the county's your streets transportation improvement program. And so it's for improvements on major streets in Washington County benefit all modes of travel, driving, walking, biking, transit, freight. It's funded by property taxes. And initially it started out as a levy that was approved by the voters each time. And then it changed into a program that now allocates funds every five years. So this is the next five year cycle. They have $200 million available. And that's typically split relatively evenly between the four council districts. So about 50 million in the district near us, kind of the southeastern portion of the county. Which all includes Tiger and Sherwood and number of King City and the number of other. They've just opened up the call for projects. And we'll have until May third to get our projects nominations in. And so the big question is what projects are we going to be making? And here's some of their criteria. So they must be on the system of countywide interest, and this is a bind and map. A map of the major roads around county. And equity is a big focus to find in a few different ways. But they have a composite equity map that will show where projects get the most points in that category. And there are five stated outcomes for the major transportation improvement program. Our equity, economic vitality, natural environment, safety and livability. So this is a little bit of how projects can kind of rise to the top rankings. I think a lot of it is somewhat subjective as well. This is the system of countywide interest. It's the major roads throughout the county, but typically not date highways or not the freeways at least. But all the surface streets. And in our area, it includes twelfth and Sherwood Road, Boons Ferry. Nyberg Street, sixty fifth avenue, which is on the list or on the map. I talked about that with Erin Wardell from the county a couple of weeks ago. When she explained the other program and some of their criteria. Most of Sagert's on the list along with Herman Road, twelfth and Road. Several of the other. Roads about level and larger. And this is their composite equity map. And it's rated both on. Kind of lower income, black, they're just people of color, communities are kind of historically underserved communities. Also jobs and access to job. So the darker shades tend to get more from the scoring. And then as staff, we've gotten together and prepared a list of project candidates for you all to consider. And the question is, which one or maybe all of them do we apply for? And sure, there are other concerns that you've heard from the community. Tried to record a lot of the ones that we've heard. And so I plan, this is the over the five projects. So one is Boons Ferry Road, Fourwood, Y five. And kind of a high school to I five and through this whole area. Another one is Herman Road, Siple Road intersection, and then Herman, the western portion of Herman Road. Third one is the Boons Ferry, twelfth and Sherwood Road intersection. A fourth one is sixty avenue and Borland Road, this area here. And a fifth one is an interchange area management plan. I'll get into more of that. Particularly around the Bridgeport interchange for us and the lower Boons Carmen Drive interchange in Tiger and half Tiger, halfway as we go. So the plan is to walk through each of the five projects. And I think it would be good if there's clarifying questions about the projects to be kept asking. I'll try to answer those as we go through each of them. And then I think at the end would be the time where we try to come up with our project list. Any questions about the program? Overall upfront questions?
I had a, I had a question.
Sure.
Um, you know, I look at the Ferry Road. By Alexson and I know that it's not shaded, but I'm just curious when. If there's a way that we can write in the application how that areas and. Being ahead of the game, you know?
Yeah.
Because we're going to have, you know, there, there's going to be. Affordable housing and some other things put in there and. Concerns that might be reflected currently. So that's my point.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. And I think that we can definitely emphasize in an application. Of how affordable housing is being built in that area. And anticipated how a lot of jobs will be coming to that area. I think the county intends to use this equity map, but I think they say the investment is based on how the anticipated area is growing.
And I just think too with the schools being there.
Right.
With their livability and safety. Thank you.
All right. Well, I want to start right in with that project. And so this would be, we listed it from Norwood to the I five North Wilson Village. And I think we've got a lot of about just how bad traffic gets in this particular area. And a lot of concerns about safety in that area. So right now we're listing in the graphic is this red portion is that's actually in Twelton or. Will be in Twelton growth boundary. And then the future. If the Salt Creek Parkway project gets constructed, it comes across right about here. And then this purple portion would be in Wilsonville. I believe some of this is unincorporated Washington County now, but. Future Wilsonville. So it'd be a lot of agencies working together. It's currently county road and the state highway and that's state interchange. It'll be some sort of capacity improvements, traffic move better along this whole section of road. And then improvements to help people like along it, get across it. And I think. Probably hear a lot of the benefits, immunity input and traffic issues. I've checked around with some of our neighboring agencies. It's in the Wilsonville transportation plan, but I haven't heard any push from Wilsonville to get it built. But then asking the county about it. And I think they can kind of see in here and understand needs. It doesn't sound like it's one of their high priorities right now for the county road portion. And so we're estimating some form of capacity improvements, particularly centered around some of the key bottleneck intersections. And it may be developing. And it costs to be the eight million to twenty million dollar range. Which is a lot of money. One option is possible with the program is to apply for design funding. So that rather than commit, you know, a lot of dollars to get it all the way through to construction. The first phase would be looking at really where the kind of improvements would really work the best and then start designing those improvements.
You have a question, Mike? Or or comment, I guess, on this particular project? I think I don't, I doubt I'm the only one, but this is what I'm most about from the people that live in our community. Just the congestion on this. And I guess even though like, I know like councillor Brooks said. It's not developed now, but we know it's going to develop. We're going to be industrial. So. And the house, I mean, it, to me, it hits all of their scoring requirement and. You know, the equity that councillor Brooks talked about, but I'm like vitality because we're going to have industrial there. Natural and they've heard enough that from the county from us about that one, see the livability. So. I don't know. I think we need to at least look at designing, you know, base for this because. By 2028, it's, there's going to be built up. I'm sorry, I'm not speaking right now, but it's going to be built up more by 2028 from what I'm seeing. And so. I think to do something to, you know, that road's already a big mess. So we need to try to move forward with something if at all possible on this.
All right. Thank you.
I have one too.
Sure.
I just remember when we were having a different discussion and they referred to this interchange as a failed interchange. And I think whatever we can do to help make that work better for I five, for ODOT. I think was the one that was talking about it and especially not only the development that slated for there, but this. If the tolling goes through the diversion that's going to happen there. And a place that's not functioning as it is right now because of the. What's termed as that fail failed interchange. I think those are really important points that. I don't know how aware the county is, but and I understand this looks like it needs a lot of collaborating. And I finally want to say because of the concern they have about the development of the urban growth boundary and how we're doing it. And what we see in other areas, if we build things out after property owners are there after. You know, when you have to start moving things around, it gets more expensive. So. Feel right now, this could be a very of keeping things less expensive and more proactive. Even though it's not proactive, because I do think it's to respond to this interchange problem too. So I just didn't want to let in the conversation. Because I know we're focused down county, but I think that the freeway system really big impact on how traffic moves through and. And that road feeds into it.
It does. And I think also this strike I five tends to have a longer spacing between surface street interchanges. Between Nyberg and North Wilsonville is a farther distance than urban area, probably because of the I two oh five interchange in the middle.
One more thing, Mike, sorry, but. From what I'm hearing or what I know about transportation, there's not, it's not easy to coordinate efforts between the different entities. And that's what I'm wondering is like. Is they to get ODOT to do their part or push them if, if this project capital. Possibly help this up on ODOT's priority list that I five interchange?
I think it would.
Okay.
I think, I think if another agency is funding, you know, a project. That could be a future cooperative project. I think that tends to help push it up as well.
Okay, because it seems like the whole mess, people trying to get on I five. There's a lot of it. So it's like, we need all the county, the city and the state to all put in their part to really make the whole thing.
So. We also control, going back, this whole area was per metro. That the Basalt Creek planning area, the metro driven directive. And if they want this to develop the way it was anticipated, they have to be a participant. And helping coordinate all the different government agencies that's done.
That's true. All right, our next project. This is the west end of road, or currently meets Siple Road. It's a very unusual intersection configuration. At twenty degrees between each leg, the triangle or sort of like a marble. And the project would combine. Improvements to that intersection. So it would be either a roundabout or a traffic with some realignment. So we'd have to realign it in one way or another. So the some sort of a straight through phase for traffic signal to work, at least work as well as it could. And then the second Herman Road between Siple and twenty fourth. You know, it's currently a narrow strip of pavement with no sidewalk or bike lanes or center turn. Drainage issues, other things that would need to be stopped. So this project. Fix the intersection. And a first phase would be how best to fix the intersection. And then it would improve Herman to urban standards, kind of matching most of the rest of Herman Road. From what we're over the cycle. So two travel lanes, seven lane bike lane, plant a strip, and then the sidewalk just on the north side. Because the railroad typically doesn't want sidewalk on the other side. So this one, we're anticipating about the eight million range. And this was, is one that they could. Kind of free through and it's pretty clear what needs to get done. In this particular area. And it touches their median priority, I think, because of all the jobs in this particular area. So it gets up to median priority on their index. Any questions on this one?
I, I mean, I know that intersection, but I've traveled there often, but even in the picture, you can see tons of trucks. So. I mean, is this, do you know how high of a use this gets on a typical? Like.
I don't know the specific traffic volumes. I don't recall them, but there are a lot of trucks that will be coming through here. Particularly as this area is more. We'll see quite a few more coming in.
It's crazy. I use it all the time because this is the secret. This is a secret to all insurance would bypass. And this idea, you know, back in the day, Herman Road was the, the relief route of twelfth road if it was. Completed totally from basically where we have here from coming down ninety nine. Herman Road was supposed to be built all the way, all the way through. You ever famous bridge over there that get folks, you know, through Walton to people in the residences. And get them all to Sherwood Road. So this, this is a pretty popular road. The good here is if you continue on, pass that little Mercedes, you know. Try star, if you will. There's also the back way to DMV. So you never saw the short road. Counselor President Grimes has a question.
Thank you. Something else to consider. That I think can impact on this one and also. Recommendations is that the architectural review board last month. And I think I mentioned this, I apologize if you remember this. That's all time and green completely redeveloped and it sits. You know, right between the hundred and twenty fourth and cycle and it would be a massive, massive three field wide. Warehouse that's meant for trucking to come in and out. And it's going to have something like over fourteen different bays. For. To drop off and collect guys. And they're hoping that the majority of that traffic will come and go from a hundred and twenty fourth. There's still going to be an entrance on cycle. So we have the traffic we have now and the development we have now, the trucks now, but now we're going to have this massive thing in addition to it. So that might make this project a little bit more. Because that's going to be construction on that is to start this summer. So that's going to be pretty quick.
Yeah, it's about a half million square foot of a logistics center. Which I think needs a lot of commitment out.
Yeah.
What I've seen in the plans, it is literally farther than I can hit a driver.
Yeah. Well, that, yeah, they said the, I guess, the east, west is literally three football fields.
Yeah.
Right. So that's a biggie. Got lots of truck traffic in that. And there's even a possible road to improve to give them better access turning. Into and off of a hundred and twenty fourth. So lots of traffic that'll. Put it on right there.
Good. If the county wanted to, they could add to this project, cycle work. And they can include cycle with this project as well. Any other questions on this one? The third one is the twelfth and Sherwood Boons Ferry intersection. Just another one of our trouble spots. And I think it will be, become more of a trouble spot in the future. Particularly as the county's big five lane widening of the twelfth and Sherwood all the way in through, through Sherwood Highway ninety nine. It's done. As we do our bond program project to the east to help people get to I five. This will then become the capacity limiting point on twelfth road. And it already is on the Boons Ferry. But I think there's a lot of question about just what would be best of year. And what could fit in? We envision a combination of turn lanes, perhaps a second down through lane. And right turn, left turn. There's a lot of question about just which approach and where to put your lanes. And then some space strengths. Like the McDonald's drive through is not far from the, from the south way. So there's not a lot of space to fit through there. But that would be a major acquisition. So there's a lot of question about just what this could be and what would work well. It's another one that could be a design only project. And this, I think by touching into our downtown areas gets to the medium high priority level, the county's equity index.
It's also bigger in our proposed urban renewal zone for downtown.
Right.
Mike. I know we're doing bike pad improvement. Some very, aren't we doing them up to twelfth and Sherwood's some. If any we're doing in the next year or two, would that just be really done if this?
Well, we currently have planned in this area are some buffered bike lanes and some just improved bike lane striping.
Okay.
It's kind of like, it wouldn't be a significant investment. You know, if a big project came through in a few years. And it would be worth doing, you know, just for helping people in those few years if.
Yeah.
That direction.
I do see, I mean, I ride my bike down this, but I see a lot on here. So I think. List and pedestrians, it would be really nice to have this safe intersection.
Could have somewhere planned as part of our twelve moving forward program. Adjusting the median in the lane space, we have enough width between the existing curbs to get in a northbound bike lane. And so we're planning to do that through striping and adjusting the median. That's also a relatively minor fix compared to, you know, what this would end up being. And. Don't see any other hands up.
I have one.
Okay.
I just feel for myself. And when I think about this congestion on Boons Ferry, I realize certain times of the day. That congestion goes all the way through the entire city from one of Boons Ferry to the other. And this is right in the middle. And part of it for me, I know, is if I want to cross twelfth and Sherwood Road. On Boons Ferry where this way that that light, I can take a long way around and get across faster. Than going directly across there. And so I guess my question and, and my point is, I think between the railroad crossing. You know, how we have to move traffic down twelfth and Sherwood Road, anything that would ease up. That weight there and because I think that that really does add to the contingent in the backup. Going along Boons Ferry. And then I think the other thing that really came out that I think about with this particular one of the. The survey that was really done and the need for more kind of connection activity. Just like councillor Pratt had in, in mayor. It's, it's a hard place to get across, be connected. And it's such a. There's a potential of it being more vibrant in our city. So I think it's a really key. Place around, how do we connect these two sides of twelfth and Sherwood Road? And how do we keep Boons for moving and, and. The livability with getting to our downtown services while still trying to cut, whether it's commuter traffic through Boons Ferry or. Or commercial traffic on twelfth and Sherwood Road, freight traffic on the freeway. It's just a lot right there. So I'm all for all, whatever kind of attention we can get.
And those are the kinds of issues we hope to address with the projects. We do see the traffic volume drop off quite a bit on Boons Ferry. North of Sagert. Because I think people realize the traffic here is bad. And then if they go this way, they'll have to wait a long to through. So I think a lot of people take other routes to get around it.
Yeah, I avoid it and I shouldn't be. And I, yeah, it's very interesting, creative little ways to scurry around and avoid that for someone that lives here, but. And then I was also curious, as far as color on the map, is this one of the darker purple?
The medium high is the second darkest shade.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I want to know.
This is, I'm wondering, how creative did these plans get? I mean, clearly we're close to water, so you can't go ground. I don't know. Do they, do we ever like for high volume areas, one lane that can go north and south or, you know, on the other side, east and west and traded off? I mean, I feel like we kind of aren't very creative. And I, I wonder if there are some ways that we can be a little more of an adapt to. High traffic volume times creating, you know, because there's no more space unless you're going to do, you know, bridges up over or whatever. But I'm concerned that was not being very creative.
Thank you. I think a good phase of this would be a real study to get the traffic numbers. Try to even get the how many people are back running around it numbers. And I think look at all the possibilities for how we're going to make this better, I think, including some of the more creative solutions. Because I'd recommend that as the first phase. We put the cost estimate somewhere in the six to fifteen million dollar age. And I think six is some of the more traditional solution. Fifteen would be some of the more creative solutions. And some could be more than that. But I think in this one, a good first phase would be really figuring out what the best solution is. And how to work with everything else.
I just want to make a comment that since councillor Hillary was just talking, she had. In a preview, he suggested a pedestrian bike overpass. And I think this would be actually. Not cheap, I'm sure, but.
Somewhere around twelfth and Sherwood Road would be across twelfth and Sherwood.
Well, it'd be great if the train could go up over. That would change a whole lot of traffic, right?
Yeah.
Or the, the cars go over the train tracks, that's what we've discussed you go.
There you go.
Because you could never rebuild this intersection today, it would be illegal.
Probably would.
We have an attorney now, I hear, can we fix that?
Any other questions on this one? All right, project number four, um, is sixty-fifth and Borland. And this is over by the hospital, right now, um, we hear a lot, see a lot of congestion coming from the way these signals are so close to each other. And a lot of people come across Sagert, North and Sixty-Fifth and East End. And, uh, you know, this is an old, because the houses aren't in Sagert Farms yet. Uh, this would do, it was build a northbound right turn lane here, so that people be able to turn on the Borland. And.
Recording stopped, recording in progress.
Okay. Um, and that would really help the intersection here. So particularly in the afternoon, there's three, what we call phases, kind of the three traffic movements that the whole cycle that can't go at the same time. And it's a southbound left, so from sixty-fifth on to Borland. Uh, and then the westbound left from Bon to Sixty-Fifth. And then the northbound through, Sixty-Fifth going straight north. So those cushions fill up the whole signal cycle, and we can't get enough through to really make the traffic work. What the right turn lane do is get the right turning traffic out of the northbound through lane. So then the northbound through lane takes up only about half base and about half the signal cycle. And that would help our signal operation significantly.
Mike, this is C again, so I'm curious, what are best practices then? Because I know when you turn onto Borland Road, um, there are into that medical facility like right away, and it stops traffic, so our best is to remove those, um, in and out, sort of into the medical facility and move them down farther, or what is that?
That's definitely something that, um, would be looked at at design. Uh, and just how much of an effect that particular one has on that flow. Uh, typically, best practice is try to move accesses away from key intersections. Uh, but we also have to balance that with like access needs from the citizens. Um, and how that would work out, so I imagine a pretty big discussion.
Uh, back when we had the, uh, development of the continuation of Sagert, the owner of the facility were not keen on those driveways being closed down, it was one of the fights we had. And the city committed to leave the driveways the way they were, uh, because it got rigorous on how to continue Sagert. Uh, they didn't want these, uh, removed from the, when the road came through. And then, uh, second thing, Mike, the other day I was on this, I was going from Sagert, heading left on the Sixty-Fifth. And, uh, I went through two or three cycles, uh, because it just gets jammed to people to left from Sagert heading north. And the folks coming down south on Sixty-Fifth, you know, coming up from, uh, corporate area, and that area just queue up, and traffic gets stuck, and, you know, the other day, quite honestly, I sat there and said, when this area was up, we were told these lights would be coordinated, everything would work fine, right, as council person grounds, and it'd be no problem, and I see problems.
Yeah. No, I, you're absolutely right, and what's happening, uh, oh, uh, Counsel Hillary, Hillary's comment. Yes, that is scary when you take a right onto Borland and it's a night, and ironically, when, um, Sagert Farms being developed, um, part of the development was ending the opportunity when you're going uh, westbound on Borland to take a left into either of those driveways, that was eliminated. So can you imagine, there was a time in an up to distance when you could go left in or come around the corner and take a right to there, so you know, we cut out fifty percent of, I know what you're saying, people fly around that corner, and then it's, it's a little dicey. But what I've noticed, because I'm over there, is people that get impatient with what the mayor was talking about, they go straight through Sagert, take a shortcut through that neighborhood. And they, so, yeah, and they also go through light at Borland traveling west, they go into the medical, go through their parking lot, and then plop themselves back out on Sagert, it's very easy to sit two or three lights like. And, um, yeah, that, it's a huge problem, and then the, the diversion traffic that gets I five, anytime there's a slowdown, just turns it into worst parking lot. And then Bor has huge problems where it hits Stafford on the roundabout, about three to six o'clock every night, it's really difficult to get on there, so. Yeah, anything we could do to alleviate traffic, I mean, sometimes it just is actually sad, because from our house, you can hear the ambulances getting on and off the freeway. And you can hear them trying to up Sixty-Fifth, when there's a lot of traffic on I five, and you can hear the ambulances trying to urgency group and having a really hard time getting up Sixty-Fifth, and that's that's the worst sound in the world. You know, the creeping that they're doing when some split lanes end up repairs, so. I think it's a high priority area with schools and hospitals, anything we can do that.
Sorry, I'm sorry, it's also an intersection that ODOT has even admitted will be F by F. The tolling diversion, so I'm really concerned because all those front churches, are we gonna get some of those, what is it, twenty-five hundred homes? Only, they're headed this way.
A- absolutely, I mean, I, I just think it, and I'm never the ultimate solution would even be because before we sessions about this, taking Sixty-Fifth to additional lanes going more south, the problem is just south of the diamond. You bump into that bridge over to I five, and you know, that's not our bridge, and I can't imagine the best to move that out. And bump that out to Borland, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, be creative and.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, yes, we'll have a good reasons for the fix. Um, and by fixing the capacity issues, I think you could reduce the diversion through some of the reduce the creative route people are using around the area. Uh, this also touches, uh, one of the highest priority equity areas for the county. Um, just because of where it is in the community. Uh, the, in terms of capacity, the intersections are really the limiting points for how many vehicles we can get through. Uh, so if we fix this, uh, traffic will flow a lot better on the bridges, up the hill, and in that area, those areas. Um, and then our last project, and this is a much earlier stage, this is what they call an interchange and management plan. And this up initially, I think in some of the light rail discussions, and the basic issues, there's so many agencies around the two Boons Ferry interchanges, so the Bridgeport Inter here, and then the upper Boons Ferry, Carmen Drive intersection in Tiger. Um, and there's pretty clear capacity issues. Um, and a lot of different agencies involved to make consensus a little more, on just how to address them. Um, so this would be a plan to look at the interchanges and come up with specific project rest, some of the issues that we'd see there, both capacity and walker bike across it, um, transit access as well. So one of the examples is, you know, when we looked at one development case in this area, it was into Walton. Uh, the driveway of the property was in tight, connecting to a Washington County road, connecting to an ODOT interchange. Um, with Durham close by, uh, on the other side of the interchange, it becomes a Clackamas County road, and Lake us, we go close by. And Triment running in and through the area and with the in-transit center and proposed major rail stop uh, here, so that's, I think with seven different agencies, they run maybe eight. Uh, the idea is to get everyone together around the table, and work out a plan that works for everyone, so then when a development does come in, they can be required to contribute to certain projects uh, to make the transportation issues long-term as the different areas redevelop. So this would be an early stage of developing a plan, um, before we even get into project design, this is one that I would suggest, you know, we submit the application that we would be glad to participate with all the other agencies in developing the plan. And that would be, could be county, could be seat, um, really leading the process.
Could you include the southwest corridor in that plan?
It would need to be considered or included. And I think it would kind of, there probably have to be two scenarios, kind of a with and without at this point.
So Mike, on a interchange, you and I discussed this, I can't remember what you said, sorry. So how far does ODOT's authority go on the bridge? Because I know they have authority assistance on each side. Do you know that off the top of your head? Because pretty much this is an ODOT issue. And of course, it's got a lot of, you know, it's a lot of partner agencies involved. But how much would I have say pretty much all the way to, uh, Boonie Road on the east?
Um, to believe ODOT's jurisdiction goes from the interchange to Seventy-Seventh Avenue on the west and Sixty-Fifth on the east. I think those two are both ODOT signals.
That's, that's what the, they pretty much have jurisdiction, that whole key area, I mean, basically, there's a big gorilla on this, if you will. That this is their bulk that needs to be, you know, ironed out, especially when we had, you said, you know, potential development at site and then southwest corridor. That ODOT would have really rethink this, and then if they were to put the additional parking garage, we once discussed, they might have to change I five in that area too.
Yeah. And just the way things work at ODOT is they have so many needs kind of screaming at them all over the state. Um, that the local agency doesn't raise an issue under their radar screen, it basically stays quiet this.
This, this is another one, like I mentioned before, um, you know, I have a feeling Metro is gonna bring back the idea, and it's gonna bring back the idea of southwest corridor. So Metro is gonna be the chief agency to get this coordination going, because if they want that Bridgeport station, this is gonna have to be looked at.
Yep. So a lot of issues there, um, and I think our last slide, questions and is, are there any slides that you'd want me to go back to, to any of the questions? All right, with that, I'll stop sharing so we can all see each other. And.
All right, see you, Freddie, all right.
So I guess the next question is really, what do we apply for? And we can apply for up to all of them, or even more, if there's other projects that we want to submit. Uh, and, you know, we could see how much we actually get. Any thoughts on what you'd want us to for?
My take is we swing for the fences and all of them, but. If, if you don't submit five, all in there and start working on them, Counsel Brooks.
I just want to, um, say that for whatever we submit, um, that I'm just really conscientious around the deep concern of the community around noise mitigation and tree loss. And I know that when the county was here, they, you know, I, I talked about a green ban for sound buffering, and they said that didn't sound exciting to them. I just wanna say, it sounds really exciting to a lot of people that live here, and I keep hearing about it. I agree with them, so, um, I just wanna put a plug in for whatever we apply for, I'm with you, Mayor, um, whatever we apply for, which I'm up for applying for. We have a lot of issues with traffic, and it's no secret, and it's not, you know, it, it's bigger than Washington County, it's, you know, bigger than ODOT, it's bigger than Metro. Whatever we can push on any of it, I think it would be appreciated by our um, community, and our business community, by the way, because they can't get work done sitting in traffic either, it's completely inefficient, so, um, but I really wanna just say however we can incorporate sound mitigation in green spaces in our uh, applications, in our intention, and I think it lines up nicely with what they talk about. If, if they really mean it, livability, environmental concerns, and ecu- environmental equity, so, um, I just have to, I, I would feel remiss if I didn't say that. And I still think it would be nice, it's a band of buffering along one hundred and twenty-fourth. Um, somehow with more green, and I don't know how, how we do that, but since you're here, Mike, and thank you for all the work, I appreciate it, it's very good presentation and very thought-provoking, and a good conversation with my fellow counselors.
Thank you.
That's for Saco.
Um, so if someone's never been through this process before, are there any downsides of submitting projects? So, for example, uh, you know, there's obviously a, a big dollar swing amongst the projects, so is there is there a chance we submit all of these and they look at, let's just say, um, the Bridgeport Interchange area management plan that maybe isn't the highest on our community's priority list, would they look at that and say, okay, well, this will be an easy win if we give all of this ask, because it is a lower dollar value? Would we risk maybe not getting funded for those more high-priority projects? And I don't know how this works, so, um, because I've never been through before, so can someone maybe talk about what risks we have into going for all, all of these, rather than putting all of our weight behind maybe our most, um, our top priority?
Well, I think the, I mean, one of the risks involved is just the staff time that will be invested in preparing an app for each project. So it's kind of an upfront cost. I think, you know, there's the risk of, you know, they pick the smallest one. Um, then there's also the possibility of, I think the ones that we submit really get on the radar screen, and you're recognizing needs. So at least in my experience, um, it's been better to submit more, because it helps people become more aware of the needs, more aware of the issues. But I think these are all significant needs. And I think, I think there's more benefit in getting them on the radar screen than there would be kind of the potential for choosing a small project or, you know, the amount of investment involved with it.
Are we able to prioritize any of them, or do they just go into like a pool of projects?
I think the process is they'd all just go into a pool.
Because they're, they're gonna get bored competitively, uh, you know, because, you know, if we looked like Mike mentioned in the beginning, basically District One, you know, Commissioner Rogers, he already has fifty million. And so it's gonna be fifty million for his district to award, um, so everything should be competitively worded, so, uh, you know, we're gonna be competing, you know, we're competing against Sherwood Tiger, uh, on their project, so me, we want to throw all projects in. And Commissioner Rogers has been hooking me, prying me, emailing me, calling me about get projects in, uh, for this M step. And I don't think he should, you know, five projects is not that many.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm.
Right there.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Counsel Pratt. I'm fine with submitting all of the, all of them, provided it doesn't count against. My top three, though, would be a road, uh, lower Boons Ferry. That would be one of my top three, Twelton Sherwood Road, Boons Ferry, and then Sixty- Twelve and Sherwood Road, Boons Ferry, and then Sixty Fifth. I mean, if I had to say. Like shorten the list. That's where I would go. And if there is any benefit, as Counselor Sacco was saying, you know, sort of. As individual council people and as a council kind of throwing our weight behind. Say our top three or four entries to really help push it along. I mean. That could be a good use of resources too, if we think that'll make any difference. I hate to just submit everything kind of like the universal grading system and then feel like eh, it's a toss up what might get. Moved further.
Well, uh, Mike, Cody, Shirley had a discussion, uh, what was it last week, Mike or so? About this and the list was way longer than this initially. And we rolled them down to these five, uh, specifically because we wanted, you know, looking at the metrics for scoring. We wonder, we looked at this, Mike looked at it, Cody looked at it, that these would score well, five metrics. And so the other ones were basically pushed aside as things we might. Um, follow up with, with maybe better old dollars next time earmarks come out and stuff like that. But these are the five that would make, would score well with Washington County.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. I didn't realize that. And that does make a difference how I think about this thing.
Counselor Hill here.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, have any of them been applied for before, the five that we have on the list?
I think so.
Okay. And I guess so my, from grant writing and, and pushing things through like that is that. Um, I am in favor of um, putting all five in and whatever ones hopefully. Hopefully we have more selected than not, but the ones that aren't can keep pushing and saying, well, we've been asking for this. So it, it might give us more power. Or more um, credibility for the next round. So that would just be my thought.
Or when the, there's opportunity matching dollars. That they're aware of that. And then when we get to the opportunity dollars, we might be able, you know. Cobble some different sources together like you're saying, Counselor Hill, here to get a project done. Counselor Reyes.
Thank you. Uh, thanks Mike for the presentation. I um, I, I understand the grant writing process as well. And I feel like. There, there is also an um. If we can, and I know you have it here as the priority, low priority, high priority, medium priority. But I um, I, I think it was Counselor Brooks to mention if there is some pushback or there is like. Um, a way of putting in something that what is the highest priority? What will be? They're, they're only allowed to fund one or they won't be. I definitely think the Boons Ferry and um. Uh, Twelve and Sherwood, Sherwood. Intersection, intersection, uh, intersection is really clustered and I, I would definitely vote for that one. If there's any. Any, any relief there that can help people. I just know that it's crazy there. So if there's any um, as you're right and, and they're like, well, there's a lot of. Projects here. What would be your highest priority? And even if we, sometimes we don't even have to like answer that question. We can do within the grant. So if you can. Uh, if, if the, if the counselors, the rest of the counselors think what would be the highest priority and that would be. For me, um, one of the high priority to, to fix or try to do something to make it that easier and mobile for the rest of the. Everyone that's going to Sherwood or moving, you know, in that section. So. That's just my.
Counselor Brooks and Counselor Pratt, because we got other items on the agenda. So we can get moving.
Well, I just wanted to um. Reiterate, I'm supportive of all of them. And I also have my feelings around priority and to dovetail on what um. Counselor Reyes said, I do think that. People at the county are very invested in the Twelve and Sherwood Road project being successful. And these linchpins are not going to be something that, that they. Um, won't consider either, you know, so it's not. The, the people at the grants, I think will, I hope weigh those issues. Um. The issue around all the improvements and money they're spending on. Um, and then the issues around. Encouraging this urban growth boundary and having Boons Ferry actually function. Um, in, in that intersection being right in the center of our city. So I couldn't agree more. Um, and I appreciate you um, picking out the priorities. And working together on it and, and I just support that. But I really. I'm in agreement with my fellow counselors around these residential. Roads that are priority for us and our constituents.
Counselor Pratt.
Yeah, when I looked at it, um, Bridgeport would be like a lot lower than the other projects on my priority list, but it's a pretty cause. So. Um, I would throw it in there. Just. It, it's a mess too. It's just, it wouldn't be my first choice, but and you know, we're going to have, I'm, I'm sure Tiger's going to throw in for Hall Boulevard and that's going to be a huge project. So. Whatever we could get would be great. And then my, just to clarify. Um, from what Counselor Brooks was saying of the design, once we're, if we were granted this money, is the C in charge of um. Heading up the design project?
Um, the county typically leads in the getting the project done. Uh, so they typically have, uh, they have their own project managers. They typically hire the design engineering companies that uh, get the project together. And then they put it out for bids and then they'd inspect the construction. Uh, we get involved, we're typically. We typically get a seat at the project table and we get to represent our interests. And from what I've seen, they do a pretty good job. Building what the city wants.
Okay.
Particularly for roads like that. They've done a pretty good job of getting these projects done for a few decades now.
Okay. Well, thank.
So Mike and Don, you have what you need for, to move on and get these projects submitted for M step or M step or M step? Whatever it is. I say M step.
I think, I think there's one question remaining if we're going to be doing all five, which it sounds like we are. Um, for two projects, particularly the Bus Ferry South and the Boons Ferry Twelve and Sherwood. Do we apply for the whole meal deal? Or do we apply for just the design phase? Cause we could do either.
Yeah. I, I, I mean, there's only fifty million for a whole district. So maybe design, that's what folks think. So Bridget's hand up.
I particularly. Like the idea, the whole thing. I just feel that we are going to end up being. With the way building and with the way that it's developing to the south and to the west of us. Um, if there's, and we have it in two phases so that they could, you know. Only fund half of the application, but I'm all for saying, let's build it before it's more expensive to build it. Um. It's just efficient to me. So I'm for saying, go for it.
Maybe we go for it on the Boons Ferry one. The, the other design one was the Cyclops, wasn't it?
Oh, I. I think the two and. The two were Boons and Twelfth and Sherwood. And then Boons like from Norwood South to the North Wilsonville interchange. So the two different Boons Ferry projects.
Yeah, I'm for, I'm for building Boons Ferry.
Like I said, maybe go with the, with swing for the fence.
Okay.
You weren't okay with that?
I have just a quick question. What's West Lynn's, excuse me, Wilsonville's appetite? Are they that blue section? Do they have to apply for it or is that for us that whole way, please?
Um, so I called and talked with their city engineer and it's in their transportation system plan. But he said he hasn't heard of a push from their, um, their city to get it done. Um, so it's funded, it's planned, it's, you know, documented as desired. Um, but I don't think they'd be mitigating at this point.
So then my vote would be that we would only do that part for design, but I would be glad to go with the rest.
All right. So you got what you need now? It sounds, sounds like we're going to go for the, the full enchilada. All right. You can get out of this. Yep. They could always come back to say, well, what if I give you this? So. All right. Well, thanks, Mike.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. So next up, we have the Metro Regional Waste Plan and Residential Standards. And I believe, uh, let's see. Uh, Lindsay Marshall is going to introduce some some Metro on this.
Yes, good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a bit of a head cold. Please excuse the squeak in my voice. Uh, but we are here to chat about. Variety of things, solid waste and recycling, um, that are all good things, I think, coming down from Metro and the region as a whole. So. We have Sarah Kirby and she'll be joined by Pam Peck, um, from Metro who will give us an overview of the regional waste plan, the twenty thirty regional waste plan. Um, which is essentially a blueprint for how Metro and governments, others involved in solid waste and recycling for the greater. In an area, um, can focus efforts and resources for the upcoming years. On a variety of things within solid waste and recycling, thinking about um. How that impacts the environment, equity, access to garbage and recycling, all those sorts of things. And one of the pieces. That they'll be focusing on is probably talking about more at the end of the regional service standards. And so the regional waste and the variety of actions that um, and goals have come out of. The Business Food Scraps Ordinance that we passed a couple of years ago was part of that plan. And now the next thing we're looking to. Do is get some more info on the regional service standards. After the presentation, we're looking. Um, to you to see if we should come back and explore an audit to adopt the regional service standards um, in Twalton. And so we'll have some time for questions and answers again, Sarah, and we'll be here from Metro. We also have Megan Schuler from Washington County on the line. And um, some of the Republic team, including Jason Jordan and Lewis are here as well for questions. So with that, I will turn it over to Sarah and Pam to give you an overview of the regional waste plan and the service, regional service standards.
Thank you, Lindsay, Mayor and Counsel. I'm going to share my screen. Okay. Uh, my name is Sarah Kirby. I use she/her pronouns and I'm a senior planner in the Policy and Program Development Group. For the Waste Prevention and Environmental Services at Metro, otherwise known as WPS. Pam?
Hi, good evening. My name is Pam Peck. I also use she/her pronouns and I'm the policy and compliance program director. For the Waste Prevention and Environmental Services group at Metro, which is essentially our garbage and recycling department. I want to thank you so much for. Inviting us to present today. Uh, thank you to Lindsay, um, for all her work as well. And um, we're really happy to be here to. Provide some background information on the regional waste plan. Um, so we're here today about the twenty thirty regional waste plan and how that informs our day work. Um, I'm going to provide a very high level overview of plan and then Sarah will go into some more details. Um, about the specific elements of the plan that really relate to our provision of services to the community. Um, and what we call the regional service standard. So today, here are some of the points we're going to cover, just a quick three of the plan. It's one of Metro's comprehensive plans. Um, and we'll talk a little bit about the history of developing those plans, what's in plan. And provide some examples of ultimately how that affects our day to day work and services. So as Lindsay mentioned, the regional waste plan is really the guiding document. For the work that Metro and local governments do collectively in the area of solid waste. Um, you'll sometimes hear that area of work called materials management. Because we're increasingly looking at materials across their entire life. So this regional waste plan includes everything from our garbage and recycling system to how we, how we respond in a disaster. To help address disaster debris and have resiliency in the region, um, when we have emergencies that affect those some services. Um, this is both a strategic level plan and really a blueprint for our work. And while the plan does have new elements, specifically the twenty thirty plan addresses racial equity. The planning approach really isn't new. Um, we've basically adopted this. You can think of it, our other types of comprehensive, high level plans. About every decade, we worked with local governments to develop a new plan. So this is a fourth plan of its kind. And this next slide kind of gives you, just shows you a, a history. Um, basically of going back into when we started having these plans. And the plan is really how we're meeting our region's needs and aspirations around how we manage um, stuff we don't need anymore. But it also fulfills Oregon's statutory requirements. So those state law requirements. That cities and counties and local governments must follow. It helps us also make sure we're following all of those. And the state requires that we have a waste reduction plan. So that we're actually in addition to, you know, managing all the wastes um, and recyclables appropriately, that we also have land to actually reduce waste as well. There are really kind of two key pillars of this plan. Um, and the first is to reduce environmental impacts or to mitigate environmental impacts. That includes looking at climate impacts. And as I mentioned earlier, um, this plan really looks at the full lifecycle of a product. I mean, it looks at all the impacts across a product's life. And that's because the state of Oregon tells to do that. So that lifecycle approach comes from the state of Oregon's twenty fifty vision for how we manage materials. The way that um, we can all live well and um, we're not have adverse impacts on the environment. So that's really where that life soul funeralist talking. About that. And that approach tells us that we didn't just look at the end of life, but that we have the biggest opportunity to reduce environmental impacts. Through preventing waste, things like reuse, the simple thing of just using something one time really can reuse, reduce environmental impacts. Compared to having something new having to be made for us to use. So this is really this area of reducing environmental impacts. That's what we've focused on historically. But what's really new about the twenty thirty plan is Metro Council adopted a regional strategy um, to enhance racial equity. So that. Policy strategy is what the policies that we also took into account in developing this plan and really brought a racial equity. Focus to the plan, um, really with the goal of addressing historical inequities. Um, the solid waste system for. In the past, most of this planning was just like amongst all of us, amongst just the people at the tables, the government leaders and the solid waste staff. There was kind of limited involvement with very members of our community, but not really broad based um, involvement. So we're particularly interested in. Engaging more with communities that have been historically marginalized. And um, typically that's where we also see solid waste facilities that have the biggest impacts on neighborhoods. Tend to locate it in more low, lower income areas of the region. So that's another reason why. Our system has had a lot of impacts in the past that we need to look at addressing. Um. So uh, the plan has forty specific actions in it that are focused on equity and resting disparities. And we really want to look at the historicalities of the system. And we also want to look at the pay for workers within the system. The demographics of the workforce within the system, company ownership and adds to services. So this equity lens. Can help us look at all, all of those elements. Um, a little bit about, um, one of the other things that makes this plan unique, as I referenced, is the extent. Of the stakeholder and community engagement that went into helping the plan. There was a big emphasis on um, involved community and particularly community based organizations. That represent those groups that have been historically marginalized or really just not had a seat at table as we're doing planning. So this kind of summarizes a lot of the activities that went on as we developed the plan. Uh, we had an equity work group which represented community based organizations and they were involved right from the start. And helping us really, and I'll talk about this a little bit more, um, determine the vision for the plan and principles for building the plan. We had thirty seven community conversations. And those were, were really like expanded focus groups conducted in multiple languages. At key points in the plan's development. But one of the things that was really neat about those is they also included. Local elected officials and local staff. So essentially those were meetings where there'd be tables of people from community. And each table had a local elected official and a local staff person as well, who could really to listen and help provide information as well. Um, we also did a lot of surveys and we heard, heard from pretty record number of people. Um, as I said, we typically hear from smaller groups, but we heard from a lot of people this time around. And then we had technical work groups as well. And that gave a place for industry voices to be at the table, for many more local government voices to be at the table. And other, um, also non-crop organizations that are involved in this space, like all those organizations that help us support use, right? That's mostly happening at the non-crop. support use, right? That's mostly happening at the nonprofit level. So that kind of gives you an idea of the engagement and just really briefly, I'm going to talk about plan elements, just to give you an idea of how they fit together. So we started by defining values for the plan that really serve as the basis for all the plan's goals and action. Um, then we developed principles and that's really an example of how community engagement acted the plan. The Equity Advisory Group that I've done, they felt it was very important that we have principles that kind of informed um, how we do our work in the plan. And so that was a suggestion from the community and I'll talk about those a little bit more in a minute. But those principles are something we can focus on to make sure as we implement all the parts of the plan, we're really thinking about um, mitigating, you know, very, you know, barriers, who's bearing the costs, who's getting the benefits? What are things we can do to address equity as we go along? So there's a vision for the plan, which as I noted, is consistent with our state's vision. And part of the process of developing the plan also looks at all the federal rules, all the state rules, all of that is incorporated um, into here to make us consistent with this. Um, goals and actions are really designed to close gap between where we are today and where we want to be in the future to reach that vision. And then the plan also has indicators, which could really, a presentation all on their own. Um, and we just completed our progress report on the plan. So we're really looking at, how do we know if we're successful? And Sarah will talk a little bit more about that. How will we know if we were successful with delivering consistent services? How do we know if these actions are really moving us where we want to go? And then last, I just focus a tiny bit more in the equity principles. And just as I referenced, these three principles, so community restoration. And that's looking at repairing harms and, um, and impacts that have been disproportionate to some groups. So, um, in practice, what that looks like is acknowledging those historical impacts. Centering more people in the decision-making process, bring people who've been left out into the decision-making process. And that's really looking at costs and benefits, um, of the system. Community partnerships is another principle. So we want to have authentic um, partnerships that build trust. So once again, bringing voices to the table and actually making decision-making opportunities. So one of the actions in this plan that Metro and local government all committed to is working to make all of our advisory groups, um, that to have more diverse representation from history marginalized groups on our different advisory groups. And then community investment, and that's where we want to invest in historically marginalized communities that have really borne the impacts of the solid waste system. And that means making investments in partnership with them. And it also means eliminating barriers to service and employment. And Sarah's going to talk quite a bit about some of the service barriers that we see and the work that we're doing to make sure that people who live in multifamily homes have access to the same level and quality of services that people who live in single-family homes have. So I'm going to turn it over to Sarah to talk now about this big plan goals and then she'll work pretty quickly into some more detailed, like how are we going to get on the ground? And then we'll have plenty of time to answer questions. And I'm sorry, my dog is barking, but I'm going to turn off my thing right now.
Thanks Pam. Uh, yeah, I wanted to talk about the goal areas for a minute. They're intended to advance Metro's use principles uh, and policy vision. And there's 19 specific goals and more than a hundred actions that fit in to the five-goal areas you see there listed on the right, shared prosperity, product line and manufacturing, product consumption and use, end of management and disaster resilience. And you really see that full lifecycle that Pam was mentioning there. Uh, the goals were incorporated into the plan to org, uh, as its chapters to organize the goals and actions. Uh, next to highlight, uh, just a couple of areas of recent work and related outcomes. Advancing equity. Pam said a few minutes ago, assessing racial equity is a unique characteristic of the 2030 Regional Waste. Uh, over 40 actions in the plan focus on advancing racial equity identified with the green E next to them. These actions include recent and ongoing work to improve garbage and recycling services for people living in apartments and condos called multifamilies, as well as work around creating a more adaptable and resilient recycling system and preparation for debris management and service delivery, uh, following a disaster. So this next slide highlights outcomes around maintaining and improving our garbage and recycling system. And it seemed most relevant to highlight for tonight's presentation around the service standards and some future upcoming work for Metro and local governments. A big area we are looking towards is improved collection services for folks living in multifamily homes. Metro does this through a policy tool called the Regional Service Standard. And the Regional Service Standards set the base level of service for all grid and recycling programs in the region. The standards are consistent elements for our local governments to require of service providers to ensure consistency of service in the region. So that if you move from Tuolotin to Tiger to Fort Libbetsia, a consistent, uh, minimum level of service for the region. These service standards set the floor for the service to be provided. Local governments can and do exceed the standards in some cases for still family residential collection in areas like food scrap collection or bulky or large item collection events. Some local governments have a color standard for their single-family collection bins. And like we said before, we're working towards a more adaptable and resilient recycling system and preparations for debris management and service delivery following a disaster and not just a disaster like an earthquake. But in the last 18 months, right, there's been wildfire, smoke, extreme heat, snow and ice even today that caused service disruptions to our garbage and recycling collection system. So what's next with the Regional Service Standard? Uh, like Lindsay and Pam said, we were asked to present some context on the Regional Waste Plan for your upcoming agenda item uh, to consider implement the service standards. And, uh, these service, regional service improvements are in the form of additional specifications to the multifamily Regional Service Standard. For decades, there's been specificity around service standards for single-family customers. Specifications like the size of bins provided to each household and the frequency of collection of those bins. Now, we've added similar specificity to the standards for multifamily customers for the first time in like 30 years since they were initially, uh, put in place. I've been working in collaboration with county garbage and recycling staff, including working through the Washington County Cooperative Structure that Tuolotin is a member since 2015 to look at how we can make improvements to the highly variable multifamily garbage and recycling service. Right? You might live at a, a multi-level building and have a chute for garbage. You might have different collection areas on your apartment or condo site. There might be a chute for garbage and recycling in the basement. Multifamily properties are unique in the services uh, that are available to them. Our collaborative research showed that people in multifamily homes often did not have enough garbage and recycle service volume. And the service that they did have was very often contingent to use. All materials were collected in all colored bins and some bins had labels that were 25-year-old and every iteration of decals or labels from the last 25 years. And keep in mind, folks living in apartments, about half of them move every year. Cities and counties are now in the process of adopting the changes we identified together to the multifamily and general education service standards. Washington County, Hillsborough, Beaverton, Rose Grove, Portland, Gresham and Wood Village have adopted the updated standards or are in process. Collection service providers in cities and counties are also in the process of implementing the standards. Like I said before, the Regional Service Standards, some minimum elements that are important to have consistent services available across the region and our requirement cities and counties place on their collection service providers. These standards are a bit different than the requirement on businesses that Metro has asked you to adopt in recent years. Those requirements have a service standard element and also plays a requirement on generators, the businesses directly and our specific policies and programs. These multifamily standards do not ask that you place a requirement on generators. The multifamily service standards improvement set minimum consistent elements for the service provided to people living in multifamily homes. And that includes per unit minimum volumes for garbage, recycling and glass collection. A minimum weekly collection frequency. Establishing a bin color standard. So that would be black or gray for garbage service, blue for recycling service and orange bins for glass service. Remember for the mobile population of folks, bin color is an important first signal, materials go where. Uh, requiring the use of a real decal. Metro has designed and printed and is now in the process of implementing these decals uh, by the 2030 deadline, or not 2030, 2023 deadline that we have in our administrative rule. Our previous collaborative work with cities and counties identified these actions, all centered on Regional Waste Plan uh, equity actions, as the actions needed to address the issues we identified of lack of service volume and confusing and inconsistent services experienced by people living in apartments and those. So I know that that was a load of info and that's where I'm going to stop and totally open it up for questions.
Thank you. Uh, questions for Metro staff? Council Pratt?
First, I want to say the, um, work you've done with the, um, multifamily and the standardization of this, it's just wonderful and it's going to simplify the process and make it so much easier for people. Um, I was wondering on the, um, back to the single-family residential standard, it, um, one of the, um, things was to provide bulk waste collection service. Does that mean just to have a place where we could have our residents go or to actual have like, um, pickup at their curb?
Uh, well, let me clarify, that's actually one, we don't have a service standard or regional service standard for that yet. We're actually starting a project up with the cities and counties to start that research project process. But, uh, some cities do have a bulky waste collection days, either that's like a day where you could go to your local transfer station and drop off materials. Some, uh, cities, I'm thinking of Milwaukee and Troutdale, uh, have on-rout large item collection service as part of their franchises with their collection service providers. So it's actually an area where cities exceed the Regional Service Standard at this time.
Yeah, when I read through it, it seems like the single-family standards are pretty much met. It's more of the multifamily, some improvement. But I think you guys have some great ideas. And then, um, uh, there was something else about government establishing a method for, um, the businesses and their, their compliance. And I'm just wondering how involved that would be and it would Metro be involved or is it all in the cities to come up with that and pay for it and enforce that?
Uh, are you thinking about the food scraps requirement that I mentioned where it places that are requirement on generators? Uh, so that has, uh, already been, uh, adopted and cities and counties are coming up with those implementation plans. And so I'll probably pass it over to Megan Schuler with the Washington County Cooperative, because the cooperative uh, receives Metro fund, implement that program into Tuolotin and the other Washington County cooperatives.
That's a great question, Barry. So, uh, I'm the Education and Outreach Supervisor with Washington County. Um, and we did just send the, um, letters out to our largest, uh, business food scrap generators. Um, and that's something that we've been working closely with Lindsay and other of our cooperative city partners on. Um, and so Washington County is providing the notification to businesses, the tackle assistance and resources to help them comply. Um, and the deadline to comply is a year. Um, and we are working closely with our city partners. Should we find that businesses do not come into compliance after that year timeline? Um, and, and they can also pursue waivers, um, that to, to extend that timeline if they face barriers or constraints. So um, it would be each city, um, managing that, uh, compliance process.
You know, this is my last question on the subject and it might be a little beyond the scope of this, but um, working, is, is there any work being done to have more, um, processing places for the food scraps? Cause I know there's a lot of reimbursement for having to travel far with the food scraps. So I'm wondering if there's any work being done to have more processing centers more close by.
Yeah, I can, um, answer that one. I also just want to say on the compliance that particularly cities take a technical assistance approach to compliance. So the goal is really to work with the business, not to like be punitive, really provide technical assistance to help businesses be successful. So that's really the approach we've seen Washington County, um, take. So just wanted to note that. In regard to the processing, yes, um, one ele, one new element coming up of the Regional Waste Plan we're embarking on is a system facility plan. So plan doesn't really provide like what, what's the network of facilities we really need, both public and private to make the, to basic the goals that we have in the system. So we have new folks who have come online to receive food scraps. Metro is receiving food scraps, um, at our Metro Central Transfer Station. And we're going to be looking at potentially, um, being able to create a slurry with those food scraps that would have a partnership with the city of Portland to go to their wastewater treatment. That's all, we're all working on that right now uh, and working on looking at the pathway for that. Um, there's also other wastewater treatment plants that have a future interest in receiving slurry like on the line, not immediately, but in the future. So that system facility plan, which we'll be doing for the next 18 months will really allow us to like look at and look at where the gaps are. So for example, Metro did purchase a piece of property in Cornelius that could be a future reloading location for food potentially. But our council has directed us not to make any decisions of future facilities until the facility system plan is completed and then they're able to engage with all of you about what's the system we, and then how do we want to pay for that system in the future? Um, Pride is going to be accepting food scraps in the future. Also, they're getting geared up to do that. So we're seeing a system start to emerge, but you're right, it's not all there, which is why we have this access to services payments to help, um, provide incentive until there is more proximate, uh, uh, options for processing.
Thank you very much.
So, Reyes?
Thank you for your presentation. Um, so I have several questions since you mentioned a bit of all your surveys on, I think you did it on page, not page, number five, you had all these, um, activities or, or community engagements to know how to put this plan together. Um, were any of those kind of done here in Tuolotin? Do you have any, any, anything that has to do with? Um, anything that you did here in Tuolotin about, cause that's Metro, so I'm assuming there are three counties or the three counties or just, uh, um, three counties, right?
Yeah, maybe Washington, the, the urbanized parts of Washington, Plaquemines and Multnomah County are within, yes. And so I don't, I'm sorry.
It's, sorry, it seems like a lot of the, your numbers or a lot of the activities were done probably around the, the Portland area. So I just always wonder, um, how, how do we, like, we, we want to improve things, but not necessarily always because the numbers that are in Portland are a little different from the ones that are in Tuolotin or kind of like in suburbs. So I'm just wondering how that, how does that look? How do you get to people in the suburbs and, and get some kind of engagement and, and, because we're the ones that do it, we have less uh, mul, multi-housing, multiple housing than they do in a metro downtown area. Uh, which, you know, you can see a lot of that. Um, but I always wonder when we, these words are done, since we're always kind of like tying with, with Portland, city of Portland has, they have, they have a lot more numbers than we do. I always wonder how that is with, um, more of the suburb or city. It would be great to have more information about our community. I mean, I always think of us and I know that you can't just focus on us, but still, I mean, it, it is, I never heard of any, any of these um, surveys or anything like that. I mean, was that sent out to everybody in the metro area and I happened to miss that? How, how did you get these, the, the information?
Yeah, thank you. That's such a great question and we should have customized our pre-tation to the outreach we did in your area. And I'm sorry that we did that. I'm also sorry, I don't have all of those things top of mind, but I can do recall and then we could, we could fill out, um, the gaps on that. So we had community partnerships. Um, Central Cultural is one of the community groups we had a partnership with. Um, and, uh, in, yeah, and, and they, they have services across Hillsborough and parts of Washington County. They're just one example. So we had community partnership organizations. That's one way we were reaching out to, um, get surveys to people and to get surveys to people in other languages. So translated surveys and providing incentives for folks to complete those surveys. So that was one method. Also, at that time, Metro had something called Opt-In, which was a tool that Metro used to use with a, with a, um, large, um, uh, polling firm, um, where we conducted regional surveys to a poll of people who were Polling firm where we conducted regional surveys to a poll of people who were basically had signed up. And there were many, that was, that was promoted extensively for ten years, particularly to, right, folks who have been more engaged. So elected officials, local community groups, absolutely people who have been more engaged. And then there was another survey that we did outreach around as well. So we'd have to, and believe we, as I recall, we asked for zip code. So we can certainly look of those responses, how many came from Washington County. And we can also look back and get you the statistics from all the different meetings about where those were held. I mean, we have all, this outreach happened, is it four years ago or five years ago, Sarah? And Sarah may want to fill in some other details. So I'm sorry, we didn't have all those prepared at Tuolumne tonight.
Yeah, I just always wonder if. I don't know, because I, I, I never like, I've never seen any surveys. I've never been part of this. These, if it was done four years ago, obviously I was not part of the council because I, we weren't, the majority of us weren't. Council members back then. So it's just, I'm just curious where all these numbers come in. If it is three counties and almost four thousand submissions. I mean, counties is a lot of people and four thousand in very small.
Absolutely. And we will tell you unapologetically, the development of this plan was centered on working with historically marginalized groups. So while there was definitely effort, effort to reach wide and get people to, there was a lot of concentrated effort to bring in groups that we hadn't. Talked with before. So like through those community conversations, but absolutely that low number of people compared to like the number of people in the region. That you would want to have answer a survey to know it's like statistically valid, right? Or what have you. So it was a statistically valid poll. It was a public engagement survey.
Okay, thank you. And the other.
Oh, sorry, I was gonna say, we'll get all that information to Lindsay. We can pull all those up and happy to answer others too, sorry.
And the other question I have, since you're asking to, you're creating this plan. And it seems like there are gonna be more additions. Is there gonna be a cost to that? Or, I mean. Are prices going up on, as you provide these kinds of new? Activity or outreach?
Yeah, absolutely. It will cost more money, provide services to more people. Hopefully there'll be some. Slaying that, one of the, one of the pieces of research we're about to conduct with local government, what's the cost of those bulky waste services? All the different options, how you could collect large residential items from people, is an event, curbside. So we're about to, for example, do research on that area. And then Sarah, I think, can share that costs for these multifamily improvements are quite de minimis based on our. Sarah, do you want to talk about that in detail? We did do cost analysis.
Yeah, we did do a cost analysis of the color standards for the bins. And. If, a few things here, if you were to just like replace them all out in one year. I think it added two to three cents to per ton or per yard, sorry, two to three cents per yard. A commercial waste service. That said, the bin color standard implementation, we put across a seven-year implementation window. So those bin colors, the black and gray, blue and orange, those don't need to be in place until July one, twenty twenty-eight. To mitigate those costs that they're already getting spread or the seven-year depreciation cycle that most local governments have. For their solid waste rate making. So there's a phase-in approach there. The decals, the design, printing and implementation of the decals is a cost that Metro is taking on. We did a design process about a year ago for the new decals and they feature five languages and are. Really accessibility in form so that you have high contrast colors and variable words and images and pictures. And we did user testing with Spanish, Vietnamese, Chinese and Russian speaking, as well as English-speaking multifamily residents. To ensure that the decals were understood as intended. Said Metro is printing and paying for the implementation of those decals. The last piece there is really around service adjustments, right? Around the garbage volume and the recycling volume. And Megan, I don't know if you want to weigh in there, but that Tuolumne has around thirty multifamily sites.
Yeah, around thirty multifamily sites and Washington County and the assistance that we provide have been. To multifamily properties have been recording service levels over years. And from our records, it looks like all of properties are meeting the minimum service levels for garbage. But it does look like all but one might fall below minimum service levels for recycling or glass. That's something that I see Travis and KJ on the call today. That's something that we confirm with those with Republic. And and so the bringing folks up to that minimum standard means making sure that the multifamily communities have adequate capacity. For recycling and for their glass recycling. So that increase in service does not add a cost for those multifamily properties.
And most of those multifamily properties, you know, and it was about four or five years now when we did a ranging look at service level data. Most of those multifamily properties need to add something like one ninety-gallon roll cart or two ninety-gallon carts. Of recycling service to meet that minimum level. So it's not, you know, a tremendous amount, but it's a notch up.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Bridget, because we're down to twenty minutes and we've got one item and I've got three questions. So go ahead, Bridget.
My question's pretty simple. I, I was curious around the color coding. If do businesses have this color code? It seems something for bulk and so I'm just curious how it translates across different multiple users.
So right now, the standard is only for multifamily properties. And that's because people living in multifamily homes have sort of the most variable and commute and confusing some as you go property to property. Some cities and counties have extended that to some of the other sectors, commercial or residential. But that is not a requirement at this time. And it is a future possibility.
Okay, and I just, I, I just want to say too around capacity, I know that that. You know, that there is a concern sometimes from the user end of having enough space to putting. So hopefully this would be something that would help alleviate what the need is around. Capacity of the existing garbage by diversifying and increasing place where people can recycle. And then I just am curious in the future about, just worried about time, but about ways of reducing. And. Starting further back in the conversation. And also access for communities that are historically marginalized to have, you know. Less styrofoam in their lives, et cetera. So those kinds of conversations I'm curious about.
Other questions? All right, three quick questions, maybe not quick, hopefully quick. We just went through a land use decision with an apartment complex. Where tenants complained about undersized recycling areas, garbage areas. And so I'm assuming that these new service nerds were addressed. How they're gonna address smaller apartment complexes to larger, larger apartment complexes? This is based on apartments, residents, houses going to work?
We're getting there is sort of the sum up there. Additional action that I'll be starting work on in the next year or two is around establishing standards for collection areas, right? And these service standards, the first step, setting that per unit volume and the weekly action helps to give you parts of that equation. To understand the collection area size needs to be, right? And the DEQ, Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, their recycling modernization work is also looking at, at making. Rigid recycling areas more accessible in a variety of ways. So definitely more to come on that. And these standards are that first step so that we're sort of figuring out what the volume inside this space looks like. So we can better understand the needs of space.
Because you've probably got the same pictures we've gotten of overflowing bins, overflowing dumpsters. I mean, I'd hate to be a public guy or woman in that truck, especially because it's crap everywhere.
And you know what? Those multifamily road drivers are the heroes and the fluid that makes the system work.
Okay, second, you know, I'm gonna bring up the dreaded word Ridwell. So recycling into the future, Ridwell is alive and well here in Tuolumne and we're working out the details. But on the recycling side, where is the vision on ending recycling? To your traditional garbage haulers in the zone of, you know, I've got a people and city council is getting the same email saying. You know, Republic is not meeting my needs, recycling Ridwell is. You know, why doesn't, why does this Republic do it? So where in the vision of that light about recycling, where is the, where is Metro going with this? Because I know you've got permitting coming with Ridwell. I just want to know how this fit in because I don't think Ridwell is going anywhere anytime soon. So I want to know, where is Metro vision on this?
Yeah, so let me sort of take two parts. So the permit that Metro is working on for Ridwell is actually for their facility. Where they bring the materials. So that's the specific thing that we're, we're permitting. And we just learned, I guess, maybe Friday, the Department of Environmental Quality has issued a permit. To dwell for their facility and I expect we will do so later week or early next week. In regard to where the system is going, that's really exciting and that's an amazing conversation. That we really need all of us to get engaged in at the state level. So Recycling Modernization Act that was passed in the twenty-one seven, the rulemaking for that is really getting started. And that really will change the system quite a bit. Because producers of the products and the materials that are sold in the state of Oregon will have responsibility for helping us to expand the system. To take in new material. So, but one of the steps of that process, one of the first steps of that process is just launching, which is what should be the list? What are the things that should be on the states of materials? They are doing a request for information from all the folks that this stuff and they're like, okay. Does your, does your item, your type of package, plastic X, does it actually have a place to go to be resolved? And what happens to it when that happens in that process? State rulemaking is just getting started. There's an advisory committee that includes local government representatives, which is called the Oregon State. Or in Recycling Advisory Committee. So that group, there's check-ins with that group as well. And I think there's about four or five local government folks on that committee. So that, the rulemaking process will also set out what can local governments be reimbursed for in terms of what aspects? So some of your education services and contaminant reduction efforts to get people to put the right things in the bin. So what will be the reimbursements for those? But it really is setting the stage for what will be collected and then how. So the other thing then, the next step after what's on the list would be, okay, well, what's the most appropriate way to collect this? Styrofoam is really challenging to collect from people's homes, right? As you know, it like makes a big mess and go over the place. So maybe there is deep depots potentially where that would be or return to retail options. So that state law is really important for us to follow. We've been working closely together at our solid waste directors table. To really make sure that we're all informed together and we're, and we will be helping work with all the local governments at that table to really. Have shared positions going into the rulemaking. There's also, and I'll try to stop talking now, there's also a study on the multifamily because the producers are also. They should need to help pay for expanding services to multifamily. So that's another area where they're going to do a study and that would look at what are those costs for increasing the size of those enclosures? Or getting those enclosures improved? So that'll be another opportunity for money to kind of flow in to support modernizing the system. The other thing producers will do is they will help pay for the upgrades to sorting facilities in the region. So the idea is we can take the packaging of today, right, that has, that has a market for recycling it, that we can feel good about. We can see where it's going, know what's happening to it. So lots of changes. And we really, I would encourage us to point the public to that as much as possible because their voices need to come in there and that's really gonna set services. It's what's frustrating for the public is the new services don't start twenty twenty-five. But that's gonna come before we know it.
In our discussions in the past, Council Reyes has brought up. When we had a presentation from where Ridwell is, you know, Ridwell doesn't do very well in multifamily. You know, those little white boxes aren't the answer. So that's, I'd look to Metro's efforts on increasing recycling. And to get those folks in multi, you know, family housing units, give them the ability to recycle more materials like you just mentioned. And the last thing.
Sorry, Mayor, really quickly, I just want to mention that, well, I will be back with the public team on May ninth. And we're gonna be touching on, Washington County is working on expanded recycling program with our franchise haulers. And that will include some of the Red Bull would have, would be picking up. So we'll be back to talk more about that in a few weeks.
All right. And my last one is, we've mentioned cost of, obviously. So. For Metro's rates, when they set their tipping fees, what are the impacts here? Because one of the biggest concerns of Washington County mayors is how Metro's rate increases. Aren't, are all over the place. You know, you'll skip a year, but it is a massive increase. So is part of this plan to address Metro's future rate increase of tipping fees to make it a bit more consistent, a little more predictable? You know, maybe not as radical as it has been in the last two years. I know COVID has that impact. But, you know, a lot of mayors were caught with the last proposed rate increase. Republic was caught off guard. How does this? The Metro rate, how does that address, you know, Metro's got to, you know, basically charge Republic for some stuff. And the other garbage haulers, how's this figure into that rate setting process going to the future?
Yeah, thanks. So Metro, there's kind of two pieces to that, right? There's the budget for all of our, our WPS department. And then there's the actual fees that we set to, to basically, right, to collect that budget we spend. So there's really two primary buckets of fees. One is our, just the charge that we charge for people to bring garbage to our transfer station. So that's our mixed waste fee. And, and, and then we have the regional system fee. So the, the mixed solid waste fee is just based on the cost of services. So that fee, the cost drivers are like the cost of fuel, the cost of labor, those kinds of things. And that's where most of our costs are. We also have the regional system fee. Oh, and I should say that those, those charges are just paid by people that use our stations. So they're chart, you come to our station, you pay the charge. Then we also have the regional system fee. The regional system fee is charged every, you know, at, at other landfills and places that receive waste as well. And that money goes to fund the program. So for example, like Sarah and I, the team that does inspection of solid waste facilities and those kinds of things. So yes, we did not increase our fee. We had one year where we didn't increase the fee. And that was ultimately maybe not the best, you know, we didn't do that because of COVID and there was a big spike. So we've been talking with our council. We've had a number of engagements with them and a number of forums about our budget and our fee setting process. Our council in our last work session with them directed us to look at just what you said, directed us to look at a. Keeping basically a probable increase going in the rates over the next five years. So are working to incorporate, they have not made a decision yet, but staff are working to incorporate their feedback. We also have held a couple of forums with local governments, other folks to get your feedback on our budget specifically. That budget is still up for public comment as well. And so those public comment opportunities are later in May. So we do have our website and we can send that link where you can go see all of these different discussions the council of has had. And kind of what are the next steps for them? But they're looking exactly at that. And then after we complete that facility plan, then that will also have a financial piece on it and look at, right? How would that be incorporated into rates in the future? So that would be another discrete thing. We'd be coming back to talk about that. But even with that, you keep that rate increase consistent and you just plan for living within that, right?
Or that have no spikes like you mentioned.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you. I know, Don, you need direction on staff to draft an ordinance for us to look at in the coming weeks.
Yeah, so if it is either the council to put these standards in our code, we would, we're action to start putting that ordinance together. The second thing I'll mention to you, Mary, real quick, because we do have Metro Councillor Rosenthal, we do the next meeting to get his update. So if you have some of these other questions like you just. So if you have some of these other questions like you just asked, maybe an opportunity for some answers there as well.
Yeah, Councilor Rosenthal usually gets beat up pretty well, so I was trying to relieve him, but so much is. All right. So how's council feel? You want to like direct staff to move on with drafting ordinance for our review in the coming weeks to adopt some of these standards? Yes, no? All right. I think I see everybody shaking their head. You're so directed, Don.
Great. Lindsay, do you have the information you need to start working on that?
Yes, I do. Thank you. So we will start drafting and bring it back to you. And then again, like I said, we'll be back with Republic Services in May to come and talk about annual report and other pieces. So I'm sure it happens then. But Republic has been a great partner on all of these pieces already. So we look forward to seeing you again in a few weeks. Thank you.
Yeah, we're looking, seeing you and the public folks. All right. Last thing we have on the agenda is Councilor Hillier asked for a proclamation request to celebrate Dalton Grange's hundred twenty-fifth birthday. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the proclamations? Are we okay with this coming vote on our April thirtieth meeting to be? Not hedge, yeah. All right, all right. So that proclamation request is approved. So, Don, go ahead and bring that back on the, on the thirtieth, right? It's scheduled for April thirtieth.
I'll be there, April twenty-fifth meeting.
Yeah, what happened?
Your twenty-fifth, okay, yeah.
Thank you. I was like, what happened to twenty-fifth?
No, their event is on April thirtieth.
Yep, we will get that together.
All right. All right. With that, now we'll go to getting ready for our meeting here in a few minutes. We've got a time council roundtable, so we'll do it at the end of our regular council meeting. Pledge of Allegiance tonight, I think it's Council Reyes's turn. You okay with that? Councilor, all right. Any questions on the consent agenda? All right. I think we have two proclamations tonight. We have the Earth Day proclamation. I'm assuming Council Brooks was going to do that, sorry, Dan. And then for volunteer appreciation, who would like to do the proclamation for volunteer appreciation tonight? Council Pratt, all right. And then what else? Is that everything? Let me look through here. I think that's it. Any question, comments with the few minutes we have until we reconvene at a city council meeting? All right. With that, go ahead and close this work session. We'll take a short recess and we'll come back at seven o'clock for our regular city council meeting. We'll see you in a few minutes.